Good evening, everyone. This is Jim Ostrowski with the Environmental Support Division in the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And I welcome you to our Pelston PFAS Investigation Town Hall meeting. Glad you all could join us tonight. Just to let you know, this is a little different than I know a lot of you are used to in terms of hosting public meetings. This is new to us too, but we're learning. Just want to go over some basic guidelines in case you've never joined a meeting using the GoToWebinar platform. So just a couple of housekeeping guidelines before I turn it over to our moderator, Steve. First thing is that, as you probably noticed, all lines are muted, and that means that you can hear us, but we can't hear you. If you do have a question though, today, tonight during the meeting, feel free to type it in to the question box on your GoToWebinar toolbar. So over to your right of your screen, you have a toolbar. There should be a dropdown for questions. And you can type in a question, hit submit, and we'll see those and we'll go over those towards the end today. Also, if you'd like, at the end, we'll have the option also to raise your hand. So also on your toolbar, you'll see a little button there that has a little hand icon. You click on that, and that shows us that you have your hand up, and we will call on you. And if you have a microphone, we'll unmute you so you can talk and ask your question. Also let you know that we are recording the meeting, and we will share it with attendees in a few days. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Steve Sliver. So Steve, you there?
I am. Can you hear me, Jim?
Yep, we got you.
Perfect. Well, hey, good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you tonight moderating our town hall for an update on PFAS investigation in Pelston. I'm Steve Sliver, Executive Director of Michigan's PFAS Action Response Team. And you can see here from the agenda on the next slide that we want to acknowledge again a session we had earlier today for some Pelston teacher and student recognition, and talk a little bit about a Citizens Advisory Work Group, and then get some updates on what's happening in the investigation there in Pelston. So if you can go to the next slide, Jim? Yeah, earlier this afternoon, I had the pleasure of moderating another virtual meeting where we recognized the efforts of Pelston High School teacher Steve Corlou and Brooke Groff, as well as students Zoe Ball, Jaden Booth, Samantha Christensen, Vivian Dyer, Bren Warner, Elizabeth Slater, Katie Schrock, Madison Hutchinson, and Jada Yipes. I mean, they're the ones that really found that we had an issue that needed to be addressed. They took the initiative and were very appreciative of the efforts that they undertook last year, which has led to public health protective measures today and an ongoing investigation that we're going to talk about. You can go to the next slide, Jim? And so today's earlier session, we acknowledged and congratulated them for their efforts. Governor Whitmer provided each one of them with a tribute, which is a pretty big deal. And as well as the state agencies also gave them some teamwork coins to recognize their teamwork and excellence and leadership. And so once again, I want to say congrats to all of them. I think it was an awesome effort, and I know the community there is proud of them as well. So one of the things I wanted to mention that we talked about briefly when we were there back, I think it was February 12th for the initial town hall. And we mentioned that Michigan's PFAS Action Response Team looks for advice from various stakeholders. And we have one group of advisors, which we call our Citizen Advisory Work Group. It's made up of residents from impacted communities. And so we've got right now about 89 impacted communities around the state. And anytime that we're in those communities, we essentially let you know that if you're interested in participating on this Citizens Advisory Work Group, we'd love to have you. And it's a very simple process. Go online and register, and that information gets to me. We typically appoint up to two people per community as the official members. But anybody who's interested, we will keep in the loop. And we're looking for two things from the Citizens Advisory Work Group. Basically, first is to help us understand how best to engage and empower you. You're the ones that are impacted by this contamination, and we've got protocols for town halls and keeping you informed. But where we can do better and differently that helps address your needs, we'd like to know. And we also have a responsibility to educate the general public on PFAS and the work of MPART. And so the Citizens Advisory Work Group gets together the second Tuesday of every month in a format very similar to this. That's how they started doing it back in December because Citizens Advisory Work Group members are all around the state. And so we don't bring everybody into one room. We basically have a format like this, which enables all of them to participate. So again, you'll see the URL for the link to the MPART webpage at the end of the presentations here today. Go on there and click on MPART and Citizens Advisory Work Group if you're interested, and we'd love to have your participation. So with that, if we can move on to the next part of the agenda here. And I'd like to introduce Christian Bond. He's one of our geologists in Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. You all know him. He's going to brief you on where we are with the investigation. So Christian, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Make sure I'm unmuted. So what I want to do is just tell the story of how we got here, what data we have so far, and then what are the next steps? So I'm going to take my camera away here so the screen is full size, and you can see my maps a little better. Jim? Oh, there we are. Okay. So what data did we have initially? So from the 2018 to 2019 statewide sampling, we had four data points in Pelston. One at the middle school and high school, one at the elementary school, and then two other businesses. One on US 31, and another one on Robinson Road west of the west branch of the Maple River. Those were all non-detect for PFAS. So then in January this year, on January 30th, we received a freshwater future result from a resident in Pelston. Those samples were taken by the high school students in Pelston. And that brought to our attention, we might have a PFAS contamination issue here in Pelston. So by February 3rd, we were out there re-sampling the well, and we received results on February 6th. And they did confirm that there were PFOA plus PFOS results over the 70 parts per trillion drinking water cleanup criteria. That's the criteria that Eagle can enforce. Again, that's 70 parts per trillion, PFOA plus PFOS combined. So we had to put in our sampling areas because our number one priority was to get an idea of who's affected in Pelston. And then, how can we give them clean drinking water? So we looked at what's the direction of groundwater flow and what are our possible sources? So we had an Eagle remediation site, an old gas station on US 31, just east of the Pelston Regional Airport, that told us, we have some shallow groundwater that's flowing to the south, towards the west branch of the Maple River. And then deeper groundwater that was going south, southeast with the watershed of the Maple River. Pelston Regional Airport is in the higher elevations of Pelston, and all of the watershed flows to the south, southeast, towards Burt Lake. The west branch of the Maple River and the east branch of the Maple River meet at former Lake Kathleen, at the old dam there. So with that data, we were able to look at what are possible sources? So one was obviously the Pelston Regional Airport, especially because the confirmed sample was so close to the airport. And then we also had a manufacturer where they also did some plating. We thought that could be a possible source, although that was down gradient or downhill from the confirmed sample. So that was likely not contributing to the 70 part per trillion level in the one confirmed re-sample. We also had a closed Pelston dump that was further down gradient or downhill that had some old monitoring wells that were sampled by Eagle in the early 2000s to make sure no other contaminants, such as petroleum compounds or heavy metals, were affecting drinking water in that area. It was found that no contaminants were affecting drinking water at that time, but we also wanted to re-sample those wells. So by March 20th, our contractor AECOM had sampled 161 wells. Of those, 87 were non-detect for PFAS compounds. Again, we're comparing to the PFOA plus PFOS criteria of 70 parts per trillion. There are over 4,000 PFAS compounds. So we're just comparing to the two because that's the only regulatory limit that exists at this point for Eagle to enforce. Thirty-two of the wells were between 0 and 10 parts per trillion, so low-level concentrations. Twenty-seven wells were between 10 and 70 parts per trillion. Those are your orange dots there. And then 15 were above the 70 part per trillion criteria. All of those 15 were to the south of the Pelston Regional Airport, to the west of US 31, and north of Mill Street. We also saw some concentrations further to the south, in our sampling area, in our green sampling area. You can see the triangles on the map. For those of you on the phone, they are where, close to where the west branch of the Maple River crosses US 31. We sampled five wells in that area on the Pelston dump. Those are pre-existing wells. Two of those had low-level PFAS concentrations, and three were non-detect. The two that did have detections were in line with what we were finding, up gradient or uphill. And similar compounds were being found in those wells in the residential wells up gradient, telling us that's not a likely source. It also looked like there's one plume coming from the Pelston Regional Airport at this point. We also looked at well depths. We had some questions asked about that, and it is interesting data to look at, although monitoring wells are going to be better to look at, where are the contaminants in the subsurface? But we had 57 well logs of the 161 wells that were sampled. Many of the wells don't have logs associated with them because they're older wells before well logs were either created or kept on record. Of the eight wells that were over criteria with a well depth, all eight were less than 100 feet in depth. We also see wells that are close to each other with similar depths that have very different concentrations of PFAS. This tells us that there are preferential pathways or small conduits in the ground where PFAS can travel a little bit easier. And you'll see higher concentrations in certain lenses of sediment in the subsurface. So almost acting like pipes or underground rivers where PFAS can travel much more easily. And we see some of these higher concentrations. Some of these wells are screened in these conduits because they produce water really well also. So when a well driller is drilling those wells, they're trying to hit certain lenses gravelly kind of sediment that produce lots of water, but they also transport contaminants really easily. So we do need to know more about the subsurface. The best way to do that is going to be with putting in a network of monitoring wells as Eagle's done, or the liable parties have done at many of the sites in the state. We also see one dot to the south, at the southern edge of our sampling area that is between 10 and 70 parts per trillion. So we don't have the leading edge of the plume or the down gradient edge. So what we're going to do is extend our sampling area to encompass Lake Kathleen, the US 31 corridor. We're going to look south and west of the Maple River, immediately along the Maple River, to make sure none of the contaminants are jumping to the other side of the river. Most of the times, rivers act as a groundwater divide. And so we're going to be looking at Wrangler Road, Woodland Road, Milton Road, Hartman Road, just to expand that sampling area and get some additional green dots. We've also taken off part of our sampling area in the northeastern portion of our sampling area. We're doing this because we're not finding any PFAS concentrations in this area. And we feel safe to say that those areas are not affected. And it's really the areas immediately down gradient of the Pelston Regional Airport, and then to the south, southeast, towards Lake Kathleen, along the west branch of the Maple River, that are going to be affected. So we've been in communication with Emmett County as well. We've shared data with them and showed them that the PFAS constituents that we're finding in our results are indicative of AFF use aqueous film-forming foam. That's the foam used to put out jet fuel fires and that the airport was required to train with. So Emmett County's been great to work with. They've gotten us a work plan. They've responded to our compliance communication. And they've told us four areas where they did train with AFF. They also told us where they stored it, and we have some pictures of the types of AFF that are at the airport. And the airport is scheduled for the statewide AFF pickup program. So they're going around the state and picking up expired AFF or any excess that the airports have that they're not going to be able to use. So we're going to be working with them. They also are going to be applying for an MDOT grant of $250,000 to further assess. That's going to allow them to look at source areas. They're going to be looking at putting in some monitoring wells so that we can assess where is the PFAS in the subsurface? Are there any preferential pathways or conduits in the subsurface? Is it affecting the west branch of the Maple River? Are springs in the west branch of the Maple River discharging any of this PFAS? We do have some indication that there are some low-level concentrations of PFOA and PFOS in the west branch of the Maple River. A private study did that. So that's something we're going to be looking at doing. And I think our Water Resources Department is also going to be, or Water Resources Division within Eagle is also going to be looking at doing some sampling on the west branch. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Fisher with the Department of Health and Human Services.
All right. I'm still not seeing how to...
Hey Lisa, this is Jim. You should be able to click your mouse on the slide, and it should move forward for you. There you go.
All right. Thanks, Christiane. So I'm Lisa Fisher. I'm a toxicologist with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the health concerns that are associated with PFAS, and then go over the results of the residential well sampling, and then what public health response actions were taken based on those results. Okay. Jim, it disappeared on me. I can't find the little arrows now.
That's no problem. I got you. Just go ahead and go.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to briefly go over what the role of public health is, whether that's the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services or the local health department, which is the Health Department of Northwest Michigan. So our goal is to understand the health concerns that are facing your community, and what are the specific challenges that are facing your community that we can help address? So we helped to develop a plan to investigate and address these health issues. So Eagle leads the site investigation, and MDHHS and the Health Department of Northwest Michigan lead the public health planning and response actions. So in this case, MDHHS, along with Health Department of Northwest Michigan, we evaluated the PFAS results for the drinking water wells, and then we recommended public health actions as needed, and then implemented those public health response actions. Next slide. Okay, so if you attended the meeting back in February, you're familiar with this slide. But just to go over it again, these are some of the health outcomes that are associated with two specific PFAS, PFOA and/or PFOS. So some of the health effects that are associated with these PFAS include lowering a woman's chance of getting pregnant, increasing the chance of high blood pressure in pregnant women, increasing the chance of thyroid disease and PFOA exposure, increasing cholesterol levels, changes to immune response, and an increased chance of some types of cancers, such as kidney and testicular cancers. All right. So I wanted to make clear that health problems, if they do occur from PFAS exposure, are not immediate. They're not something that's going to show up a couple of weeks or years from now. It's something that sometimes takes decades before health effects occur. But I also want to make clear that if health effects do occur, I'm sorry, just because you've been exposed to elevated levels of PFAS for an extended period of time doesn't necessarily mean that you will develop health effects. It just means that you're more likely to than someone who has not had that same exposure. So here I've got a table of the comparison values. We also look at Eagle's regulatory value of the 70 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS that Christiane mentioned earlier. But we also use these comparison values, which are screening levels that are health-based. And when I say health-based, I mean that they're designed to protect all populations, including sensitive populations such as fetuses and infants. So these health-based screening levels consist of both the MDHHS public health drinking water screening levels and the MPART health-based values. So we wanted to use the most conservative of these health-based values when using them to compare your well water results to. So you can see we have comparison values for a variety of PFAS. And then if you'll notice, there's quite a range in what these health-based values are for some of these PFAS. For example, PFNA has a comparison value of six parts per trillion, and PFHXA is at 400,000 parts per trillion. Like Christiane said, PFAS is a huge family of compounds. There's over 4,000 different PFAS. So not all PFAS have the same chemical structure. And something that accounts for these different screening levels is the half-life, or how long that these different PFAS stay in the human body. So for example, a PFAS with a shorter half-life, or a shorter amount of time that it spends in the body, needs to reach a very high level before it causes any health effects compared to a PFAS that stays in the body for a longer amount of time and can accumulate more rapidly. So I kind of just wanted to go over why you see such a range of values for different PFAS. So here are the results of the residential wells. So there were 151 residential wells that were sampled. Eighty-six of them had detections of any PFAS. And of those 86, 41 exceeded one or more of the comparison values that were in that table, and 14 exceeded the Part 201 cleanup criteria. I just want to stress that these are the residential wells only. There were 10 wells that were sampled that were from businesses as well, but I wanted to focus on the residential wells because that's what we base our public health response actions on. Thanks. So how did we determine what public health response actions needed to be taken based on these well water results? So we looked at your individual well water result, and then we looked at all the well water results collectively. And we also took into account information that Eagle had gathered from their investigation based on where potential sources might be, the direction of groundwater flow, and the depths of the wells that we had available, and then what the local geology is. This area has a lot of sand, so that was important to know as well. So based on all of these factors and all the information that we had, we decided that any residents that had any detections of PFAS would be provided a filter that's certified to reduce PFAS. And this was to provide residents with protection from PFAS in drinking water until a final solution can be implemented. For homes where there were no detections of PFAS, we decided that no public health actions are necessary at this time. And then if your well was tested, you should have received a letter from us saying what your results were and what those results meant, and included some information about PFAS and drinking water. And I'm going to turn this over to Scott Konzerzky, and he's going to talk about what him and his team have done for some of the public health response actions.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. My name is Scott Konzerzky. I'm the Environmental Health Director for the Health Department of Northwest Michigan. And when we first got involved with this site, I don't know if you went for it, thank you. We had one result that exceeded the 201 criteria, which was very concerning to us. And quickly, we were involved with not only the community, but the other regulating agencies to really determine what the response was going to be. And as Lisa indicated, our public health response strategy really focused around providing interim controls in a way of distributing drinking water, bottled water, so that people had a safe means of drinking water, and then looking at providing point-of-use filters within homes until the environmental investigation was completed. And we had some indication of what the long-term solution was going to look like. So when we started looking at the area, there was a lot of uncertainty about the scope, the nature, the size of the plume, how many residences were impacted. So in the initial days, before we could even get sampling, we were providing water to individuals within the community that asked for it. And as samples started to come back, and we had a really good three-tiered sampling strategy that Christiane spoke of, we started to refine that a little bit, and really looked at visuals that had any detectable level of PFAS in the water. Our mission was to provide them with public water or bottled water. And we did that through a way of providing water access vouchers. And one of the original logistical things we had to deal with was we needed a local source distribution center where we could provide water to the public. And so at that point, we reached out to the village and the fire department and secured a purveyor of water so we could really move large amounts of water to a central distribution area and work with the village to have employees distribute that water. So we worked with Randy Bricker... So we worked with Randy Bricker in the fire department where we have currently pallets of water that we distribute to the, to the people that need it. Um, so we engaged our environmental health staff and our community health staff to help assist um, the response. And what they do is when we receive indication that someone has contaminated well or they are waiting on results. Um, we, we would go to the community door-to-door and provide water access vouchers to those individuals. So that they had a means to go uh, to the fire department and get safe water. So we obviously established some MOUs with the village and the fire department and um, you know, worked with a. Source of water to make sure that when, you know, when there's a need in Pelston that we can resupply the fire department. The next step really focused on uh, the point-of-use filters. So bottled water is not a long-term solution. It really wasn't interim control till we could get filters in homes. Uh, to provide safe drinking water. And and the water that we're providing is not for every use. It really is for consumption. So uh, we really were looking at uh, contracting with a local plumber plumber plumbing contractor somewhere that was close that we could be very responsive. When we did know of a well that was contaminated and we could get them uh, the filter installed in a very quick manner. So we did uh, contract with a plumber out of Lansing, which is not far from Pelston. And they immediately deployed two crews, two work crews to the area. And at that time, we kind of had a backlog because we're working through the process of, you know, now I receiving the filters. So we had them to give to the plumber, but also um, working through the bidding process. So they deployed two work crews and they, they worked very rapidly and I, you know, um, within the the community, their vans were were out every day. Um, and they quickly deployed uh, um. The water filters over sixty-three residences uh, right before COVID and then things slowed down tremendously. So at this point, we know we have eighty-six impacted wells. There is a backlog of individuals who are waiting to have their their water tested. And right now, um, due to COVID, that the contractors for Eagle that conduct the water sampling are not able to do that work. So we did provide them with water vouchers and um, you know, we're just waiting those results uh, when they're able to do their work. So we did, you know, as a public health agency, part of our mission is to provide health education. So um, we work closely with HHS. They support the work that we do. Um, I'm not a toxicologist. Lisa Fisher is, you know, this is the relationship that we're in. And you know, when we receive results and and there are um. Uh, measurable amounts of PFAS or PFAS chemicals in in well water. Uh, even before we get on site, Lisa is already calling the individual to explain what it means. So they get that very personal uh, public health message specific to their sample results. And then she lets them know that we'll be stopping by and dropping off a water voucher for them so that they have safe water to drink. So that relationship to work works really well. Um, the other thing is we immediately got a page on our website set up. So we have links to the M Part website, which is where uh, the community can get the most up-to-date information. I know um, it's updated weekly um, or when significant uh, pieces of the investigation are advanced. So that is done. We also assist because we have a public health information line. So we take uh, questions from the community and we try to answer those questions or hook them up with the right people to get their questions answered. But one of the common ones that we receive on that line is, I would like to have my well tested. And rather than send them to Eagle right away, I, we just provide them with a form. Um, that gets faxed or forwarded to Eagle and then they get on the list to get sampled. So you know, there are a lot of uh, public health concerns, people that have lived in homes for a number of years. They're pushing, you know, now they have a result, what does this mean for my health? And we have those resources to help the community. So um, overall, I I think the public health and the environmental response has been very rapid. As Christian noted, at the very, you know, very last days of January, we identified our first um, impacted well. And within days, they were out there and already had confirmation results and then started this whole um, chain of events that has occurred. Um, and really like Steve Sliver said, at the beginning, this is the result of a group of students working on a project. Really looking for the health and safety of their community and discovering a problem that may not have been discovered for a number of years. So um, there are a lot of partners that participate in this. We've, we've attended and been a part of town hall meetings. We have uh, weekly or bi-weekly key, bi-weekly phone calls with either the regulators or um, local officials. Um, Emmett County has been a big player. Pelston, um, the tribe is involved. So it really has been a community-driven effort that has got the attention of all the people that can provide the resources to really address this. Unfortunately, the Scranton war contamination issue we have in Pelston. So I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Um, Steve, does you want to go to questions now or did you have something else that you wanted to?
Yeah, I I think um, at this point, we could open it up for questions.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody that um, for questions during this uh, meeting. If you want to ask a question, you can use the question box you have on your go-to webinar toolbar. It's a dropdown. Just type it in, submit it and we'll get to it. If you'd like to ask your question verbally, uh, there is a raised hand icon on your toolbar. Just click that and it's going to raise your hand and I'll see it. And then when it's your turn, we'll call on you and unmute your mic so you can ask your question. So hopefully that's easy enough. So I'm going to go to a, got a couple of questions that have been written in here. Uh, first question is. For the residents that have a filter installed, is there a plan to retest to see if the filter has reduced the levels below the maximum amount?
Lisa, would you like to take that one?
Yeah, um, so currently there's not a plan to uh, re-sample those wells. But it's something that we'll be talking about and and thinking about in the future.
Okay. Yeah, I'll add to that as well. Um, so in other areas, you know, uh, one or two years later. Um, the HHS has re-sampled wells. They're not sampling um, after the filter. They're sampling, you know, before the filter to see if there's variations of of PFAS. Uh, seasonally in those homes or yearly in those homes. Um, so that's been done in Alpena. Um, and they're getting ready to do that in in Grayling as well. Um, but those uh, filters are certified um, by the National Sanitation Foundation to reduce PFAS to safe levels.
All right, thanks. We've got a couple of people with their hands raised. Uh, first one, Heather Slocum. Uh, Ms. Slocum, I'm going to unmute your microphone, so you should be able to unmute and talk to us. You just have to click the microphone icon and make it green.
Okay, I'm unmuted now.
Yeah.
Um, and I had mentioned at the town hall meeting, as well as when we had our well tested. We have two wells. One is in our backyard. That is the well that, oh, they're both in the backyard, sorry. Um, but the one I'm talking about um, is the one I use to water my garden. We were unable to have it tested because when they came in uh, February. Uh, there was so much snow, they were unable to get back to that well to test it. Uh, when we were at the town hall meeting, my question about um. Using this water for our garden came up. If PFAS is ingested through dirt uh, or consumption, then it would just logically make sense. That if I use this water on my garden for my vegetables that I eat, it would be. It would get into the food that I'm I'm trying to be healthy by growing. So I'm wondering if and when I can have someone. And I understand the circumstances right now are not optimal for that, but if and when someone can come out. To test this well, which is approximately thirty feet, which I believe is about fifty feet. Uh, more shallow than the one that was tested. So if and when someone could come out and if a filter could be provided for that well. I know that was a long question. I apologize.
So I'll start and um, I appreciate the question. You know, there's a lot that we don't know about what um, your home garden would take up in into the plant. And ultimately into the fruit or vegetable um, from different concentrations of PFAS. And that's something that the FDA has been studying um, for how much PFAS is actually in our food supply. And we're working with the US Department of Agriculture as well to try to get a handle on areas that have significant. Um, it, application of like bio solids and industrial byproducts with PFAS in them. And we're in the early stages of that. Um, so I mean, that's a long way of saying we're not so sure what the result would tell you about your your residential garden. Uh, but I'd also like to open this up to uh, Lisa, Scott or Christian. If uh, you've had similar questions and how we're handling that type of sampling out in the field right now.
Yeah, so you know, as um, the person that asked the question said. Um, it's difficult for us to get out and sample at this point due to COVID nineteen restrictions. Uh, M Part is, you know, working on some guidance for us. Um, so that when, you know, restrictions are eased, we can get back out and uh, be COVID compliant when we do sample. Um, if you can, um, I shared my information, you know, on the slide before. Um, we'll get you a well request, um, if that hasn't been done already. Um, but we'll get you signed up to uh, to get on the list to get that other well tested.
All right. Thank you very much. And just to add to that, um, currently we're providing. Um, for residential homes, so they go under the kitchen sink. Um, so I'm not sure how that would uh, work for irrigation well. Typically, we, we have not been providing point-of-use filters um, for irrigation wells. Um, just, just so you know, and there are special circumstances where we try and find something else. Um, for an irrigation well, I'm not sure how a point-of-use um, filter would be uh, practical.
And if I can add as well, um, the sampling form is still on the M Part Pelston website. Um, so with that expanded sampling area, I forgot to mention this earlier. Um, if you're in that expanded sampling area or you're in an area that, you know, has ongoing sampling. Um, you know, and you haven't been tested yet, um, fill out that sampling request form. Uh, and follow the directions on the website there and get that to our, our secretary Leah McDonald and she'll process that.
Okay, uh, next person with their hand up is uh, James Gillett. Uh, James, you're unmuted now, so you can unmute yourself. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. Jim Gillett with the Village of Pelston. Uh, three-part uh, question. Scott, number one, uh, we are getting low on water at the fire hall. Uh, if you could arrange to have another delivery. Uh, the second part is uh, there is a, uh, some speculation and rumors around the village. That there are sources other than the airport where this uh, contamination may have come from. And uh, I wondered if Christian or Lisa could uh, could address what the odds are that there are other contaminated sites, correction, current uh, sources of contamination. Other than what took place on the airport. And the third part is for anyone, uh, Steve, Christian. Uh, what is our long-term uh, plan here for the Village of Pelston as far as uh? I mean, I understand the filters are helping, uh, and I appreciate the one that was installed in my house. Uh, I I don't look at that as a long-term solution to eradicate this, this issue. Uh, thank you very much for answering.
All right, so Scott had the issue with uh, getting some more water out there, right?
Yeah, that's, um, all I need to do is place an order and arrange to to have one of the uh. Uh, you know, one of Randy's staff meet, meet them and we will get that done for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, and then Christian, you want to uh, chime in on us looking for other potential sources in the area?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, so the, the other two possible sources besides the regional airport. Um, are the Pelston uh, dump that's, that was closed a long time ago and and sampled in the early two thousands. Uh, for other contaminants, um, was shown to not be impacting um, anything down gradient or downhill of that. Um, we sampled that again for PFAS. The indications are that that is not a source of PFAS. Um, we're finding low-level hits in two of those wells. Um, and and the constituents or the types of PFAS we're finding in those wells. Are the same that we're finding closer to the regional airport. Um, we had our contractor do analysis on a well uh, that's closest to the airport. That was over seventy parts per trillion uh, criteria. Um, you know, they start looking at the chemistry and and everything they saw points to a, a source. Um, that's A triple F or or aqueous film forming foam, uh, more specifically a three M product. Um, we also are looking and have sent compliance communication to uh, an old manufacturer. That's uh, closer to, let me see, um. Corner of, or it's on McCray Avenue. Um, that was closed a long time ago and it's, and it's down gradient of a lot of our. Um, uh, hits that are over seventy parts per trillion. Um, since that was a plater and and um, or they had possible plating activities. Um, they may have used um, some mist suppressants. Those contain PFAS. Um, but those PFAS compounds are different than the ones that you find in aqueous film-forming foam. Um, so it looks like that is also not the uh, main source of PFAS that's affecting all the residents here. Um, but we are looking further into that manufacturer as well.
Yeah, that would just. Uh, you know, this is something Christian has said and and other representatives of Eagle and I don't want to, you know, speak for them. But you, you know, the way this is rolling out, there's, there's two pieces to it. One is uh, the sampling that's occurring now, which is really for public health purposes. It does, you know, give Eagle information on on, you know, how to move forward. Um, in the context of the environmental investigation. But but those would be not using the residential wells. Those would be using monitoring wells. And they would be uh, designed and developed to give Eagle much more information than we're getting out of the uh, other residential wells.
Yeah, so I'll address the third part of that question as well. Um, so the next steps in this process would be to get a network of monitoring wells in place. Um, down gradient of the airfield and on the airfield itself. Um, that way, if any remediation is done, we can track that. We can also track uh, fluctuations of PFAS over time. Um, we can look at the subsurface more closely. These are geologists that's better going to be logging these, these wells that are installed. So they bring up the soil types, uh, and they get very exact information on grain sizes and things like that. Um, that, you know, well drillers don't, they don't take that information uh, when they uh, produce a well log for residential well. Um, once that's done and once we have our hands around, you know, what's the extent of the plume? And and what's, what are the concentration of the source? Um, is it a newer source? Is it an older source? Um, then we'll know, you know, what are the right steps towards remediation? Um, are we going to need to do a source removal? Um, is the best course of action to do, you know, a, uh, an injection of carbon? Um, so that you can trap PFAS before it affects residential wells um, down gradient. Um, so those are things we're going to be looking at. Um, in other areas, uh, like in Grayling, um, the military's, you know, addressed those homes that are over seventy parts per trillion. By um, installing whole-house filters or extending a city supply of water to them. I know that doesn't exist in in Pelston, but that's also something that could be looked at as a small municipal supply. So there are other options and and that's going to have to be looked at over time, but you need data to make the the right decisions.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
If it's a given, and I am assuming it pretty much is, that the source of our greatest problem here in the plume is the airport itself. And given that, because of that, A triple F has not been used there for some years now. They stopped using it a few years ago. Does this, this compound, this chemical eventually dilute itself to the point where it is no longer a health threat in any way?
Yeah, from what I've seen, that's unlikely to occur in our lifetime. This is a source that's going to continue to contribute. As, you know, rainfall percolates through that sand and through that source material, it'll continue to, you know, contribute to a down gradient plume. So that's something, you know, that has to be addressed. The source has to be addressed and the plume itself have to be addressed. Or you put in a remedy so that people have, you know, clean water regardless of what's happening in the subsurface.
Thank you. And just as a final comment to all of you, as a village official, I so much appreciate the fast action that was taken. As soon as this was discovered by the students at the school, everybody was on board and in tune with everything right off the bat. And we are very grateful for that and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, we got a couple of questions here on the board that I'm going to read off. Are filters the long-term solution for severely contaminated wells? Or is there a further step that will be completed?
Well, I think, you know, Christian kind of hit on that already is that, you know, at least the point-of-use filters are not a long-term solution at all. Those are temporary public health measures, protective measures while we continue to do the investigation and determine what the best option will be for the long-term solution, whether it's a deeper well, a whole-house filter, or a connection to some sort of other supply.
And I would add too that, you know, don't know, once the environmental investigation starts, how long this is going to take to really determine, you know, what removal or remedial actions Eagle can take or will take depending on what they find. So, you know, when we provided the point-of-use filters, we provided also a replacement cartridge and we know the lifespan of those. And we are prepared to provide additional cartridges if, you know, the investigation goes beyond a year is what we have right now. So, you know, we are going to move forward at the same pace as the environmental investigation with the interim controls that the Health Department can provide.
Okay, next question. Does PFAS residue remain on dishes after washing when allowed to air dry?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yep. So the amount of PFAS that would be found on a dish after being washed is very, very, very small. Really, the route of exposure that we're concerned with would be through drinking water. That's going to be your main route of exposure. So things like bathing or, you know, brushing your teeth, washing your dishes, washing your laundry, those aren't going to be your main routes of exposure to PFAS. So, no, we would not be concerned about residual PFAS on dishes.
Okay, thanks Lisa. Next question that came in was, should we be getting a blood test to see if we have PFAS and if so, where you gets tested?
Lisa?
That's a great question. So there are some limitations with getting a blood test. And that is, first of all, a lot of physicians aren't familiar with blood testing for PFAS. So that's something that they have to be familiar with. The other thing is that it doesn't really tell you a whole lot. There's definitely limitations on what that can tell you. So it can basically tell you how much is in, how much PFAS is in your blood right now, but it can't tell you how long it's been there or how you were exposed or if any health problems that you're experiencing are because of that PFAS or if you're likely to develop health effects in the future. So there are limitations to getting your blood tested. So just to make you aware of those limitations.
Okay, thanks. Got a couple more hands up. Gregory Cole. Mr. Cole, if you want, you're unmuted now, so you're going to unmute yourself and ask your question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm from Escoto, Michigan. We also have the PFAS contamination here. And to throw into the conversation of sources, one thing that happened here, a couple of things. There were house fires that were put off, put out with A triple F foam. And also, we had a forest fire that A triple F foam was found to be used. So just wanted to throw that in if anybody could comment to that.
Yeah, I can comment on that. You know, we did talk to the fire chief in the area and he talked about, you know, some foams being used on house fires, but not A triple F foam. They were protein-based foams. Those do not contain PFAS. We're going to continue talking to Emma County and, you know, see if there's any other fires that occurred where they may have used A triple F. But right now, it just looks like they trained with it on the airfield. The data suggests the same. We're not seeing any hot spots, you know, in other areas outside of that main plume, you know, between the west branch of the Maple River and US 31. But, you know, we are keeping that in mind.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Question on the board here. Are there any future thoughts or plans to create a municipal water system in the future to replace the contaminated wells?
Christian or Scott?
Yeah, so I can't comment on that. You know, Eagle, you know, doesn't have the funding. We do not put in municipal supplies of water. So that's not something we're looking at doing. Maybe in the future, there could be possible funding sources, grants, things like that. And those should definitely be looked into. But Eagle does not fund putting in municipal supplies.
And I would add through our, excuse me, through our permitting program, we work in conjunction with Eagle in their type-one program, which would be, you know, large community supplies. And we have not received any applications at this time to move forward with even looking at test wells for a municipal water system. There are a number of non-community water systems in Pelston. The school is one of them. There's a couple others that could potentially give us information about a future municipal water system, you know, because they're deeper wells. They're developed and used at a different rate than a residential well would be. But this time, we just don't have anything that's hit our desk or has been applied for.
Okay, thanks. Christian, this relates back to your maps that you showed earlier. We are the only green dot with several around us that are red and orange. Will we still be able to be retested since some wells are the same depth? Some are deeper and some are shallower?
Yes, I can speak to that a little bit. So what we've seen at other sites is we are not seeing large fluctuations in PFAS concentrations when we've sampled multiple times. That includes monitoring wells. That includes the retesting that was just done in Alpena. We had no new exceedances of, you know, 70 per trillion criteria. So it's likely that if you tested non-detect, you're likely to stay non-detect or have very low concentrations of PFAS. So I do know that at these PFAS sites, you know, DHHS has re-sampled in the past and they're going to be analyzing that data to see, you know, should we do this at every site? Or is the data conclusive and saying, you know, there's no large variations in the PFAS data? So, you know, that is something we're keeping in mind, but yeah, it's, it could be your wells at a different depth or it could just be in a little bit different sediment type where the hydrology in the subsurface is just a little different and you're getting your water from a little bit different direction than someone else.
Okay, thanks, Christian. Will those of us with filters already installed be provided with more filters when needed? If so, how will we get them? And if not, why?
Scott?
Yeah, we're tracking those. I'm assuming this person was provided with a filter and they signed an acknowledgement form. So yeah, we're going to track those and we are going to provide additional cartridges, replacement cartridges for those filters. So, you know, and if you have a concern, you can always reach out to the Health Department and we can talk about your particular circumstances. But we're still pretty, pretty young in this response. So I don't anticipate you'll need anything for quite some time. But yeah, we, as I said earlier, we're just going to move at the pace of the environmental investigation. And, you know, if we're a year down the line, we're going to be, you know, resupplying everyone with a new cartridge.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Next question. Will the state or Michigan DNR be doing any analysis of fish in the Maple River or deer for PFAS concentrations?
So I can speak to that a little bit. The Water Resources Division did put the Maple River on their sampling for this year. So they're going to be doing some surface water sampling on the Maple River. That will give them an indication based off of those results, whether or not, you know, those fish need to be tested. If those fish are in low-level concentrations that don't cause a buildup in fish tissue, they won't be sampling those. But, you know, if there is any indication, that would be the next step. You know, I know there's a lot of, you know, resident brook trout, but, you know, most of the larger fish coming out of Burt Lake, you know, aren't in that river all year round. So they're not as exposed as those resident fish if there are those PFAS concentrations in the river.
All right. Are the agencies represented here working with local organizations such as Freshwater Futures and other ones?
So Christian, you want to start on that?
Yeah, so I can, I can start on that. So the freshwater future data that was collected by the students, that's not public information. That can't be shared with us. We can't work directly with a private organization like that. They must be shared by a homeowner before we can take action and re-sample. We would need to re-sample freshwater futures results. We do, you know, we are in communication with, you know, some of those organizations. We read their reports. So, you know, there is communication there when it needs to be there. And I'm always, you know, open to communication with any group. So if they want to reach out to me, they can certainly do so.
And I just added, I think, provide a local avenue for people that may not meet the criteria for testing by Eagle. It's a relatively low-cost test compared to some of the other labs in the state. So I do know that there are some individuals and residences that have had their wells tested by freshwater futures because they were unable to through Eagle because they were outside of their priority zones, so.
Okay, thanks. Our next person who's got their hand up is Lisa Fought. Lisa, I just unmuted you, so you can go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, this is Lisa Fought with the Village of Pelston. And I was wanting to go back to the question about the possibility of a municipal supply. And the village did actually investigate the possibility of a municipal supply probably about 15 years ago and didn't have the public support. And it's not necessarily something the village is against doing if it comes to that or long-range planning. But for everybody to understand the type of investment that that would require to service the village alone would probably be, off the top of my head, roughly $4 million to install a water system. So we would be willing to investigate it, but obviously, the public needs to understand what that investment would be on the public behalf as well.
Okay, thank you. What timeframe are you talking to be able to get a solid answer on the geology and recommendation of a permanent solution?
Christian, you want to touch on that and the pace of the investigation?
Yeah, it depends on a lot of factors. So right now, there's a big slowdown in any work that's able to be done due to COVID-19. So that's the first hurdle. The second hurdle, you know, is getting this M.DOT grant money. So that'll be the next step. You know, getting more monitoring wells in place. And then, you know, doing a remedial investigation to see, you know, what is a feasible solution for remediation options. So we're talking on the order of, you know, years.
Yeah, okay. What is the minimum timeframe you would feel comfortable predicting a final solution is determined? I guess that's similar to what you just said. And another one here, what is leaching rate?
I was muted. So, you know, the leaching rate, you know, I'm guessing they mean how much PFAS is leaching into the groundwater table. We don't have data on that yet. That's going to be looked at when they look at the source areas. Once you know the concentrations in source areas, then you can make some inferences and deduce that information.
All right. Will every property owner be informed of the issues requiring their property? I'm just reading it as it came in, sorry. Will every property owner be informed of the issues? I think it's regarding their property, regarding their property. This is someone that was, this is someone, the question before is, I'm a resident property owner and have been informed of the situation. So they have been informed of the situation. They want to know, will every property owner be informed of the issues regarding their property?
Yeah, so everyone that had their well sampled by Eagle got a call from me to go over what their results were and answer any questions that they had. And then they should have received a letter in the mail from us explaining what their results were and some more information about PFAS and drinking water. So we have been reaching out to those homeowners in multiple ways to make sure they know what's going on.
Okay. If new residential wells are determined to be a fix, will the homeowners be responsible for the expense of those?
Could you repeat that one more time, Jim?
Yeah, if new residential wells are determined to be a fix, will the homeowners be responsible for the expense of those? So we tell people they should.
So likely not. So the liable party is going to be responsible for, you know, any fixes in this area.
Okay. All right, going back to the hands raised, it's like we have a couple other people. I know Heather Slocum, you had your hand raised a second ago. I don't, you just put it down again, I think. Did you still have a question or not?
No, actually, that was just answered on that, that last one regarding the law.
No, actually, that was just answered on that, that last one regarding the liable party being responsible for putting in deeper wells if that is determined to be the long-term solution. So thank you for the person that asked that.
Okay, good. Also on the board here, it looks like we got John and Marshall West. I just amuted your mic, so you can ask your question.
Yeah, just a quick question about the schools. I know they're in the zone that has tested negative, but since we have so many young children there drinking the water daily, how often will they be retested to make sure that nothing has mitigated over there?
Yeah, again, there's no plans for, you know, retesting those wells. Ideally, we get those monitoring wells in place. And that can give us an early indication whether or not contaminants are flowing in a certain direction towards any wells. There are also, that well happens to be, both those wells happen to be, you know, one, on the eastern boundary of our sampling area, which doesn't have many detections. And two, they're deeper wells. So, you know, we're seeing this impact in, in wells a hundred feet or less in depth. We're not seeing these impacts in wells a hundred feet or greater. Then again, we don't have the data to know exactly what's down there. And that's what those monitoring wells will show us as well, or boring soil borings. They'll tell us, you know, is there some kind of clay layer that keeps contaminants from, from going down that deep? Or, or is it just the plume itself that's, you know, staying in a certain depth in the subsurface?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add one thing to that. Those are considered type two or non-community water supply wells. At this time, you know, the state does not have any additional requirements once the schools have tested non-detect. They also sampled all non-transient facilities, which are larger non-community water supplies, as well as daycares. There, there is a testing regimen. You detect any PFAS chemicals, but because they detected non-detect or they were tested non-detect, there are plans from the non-community program.
All right, thanks. We did have somebody here type in a question about will everyone watching receive minutes of the meeting? I can't answer that one. Yes, we are recording the meeting and we all share it with the team here to share with attendees from this meeting and we'll post online if that's appropriate. I, I do see, we don't have any more questions on the board. Looks like we answered all of them. One more hand up. Jim Gillette, your hand is up again. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, that four million dollars that Lisa Fought referred to is about 12 years of general operating money for the Village of Pelston. So obviously, we cannot undertake a, a central water system for the Village of Pelston without a great deal of help from other agencies. Christian, given the highest number that you have found in any well in your Pelston testing, would you give us a comparison of the highest numbers you're found in SCOTA, Alpena, or Grayling, just so that we can get a grasp on where we are in this contamination?
Yeah, sure thing. So I'd have to pull my data up here. That might take a second, but I don't have any knowledge of SCOTA. I'm not the project manager for that site. But I do know that the plumes coming, especially one plume coming off the Grayling Army Airfield is, you know, much higher than what we're seeing in Pelston. You know, we're seeing levels here, I want to say, you know, just under 200 parts per trillion PFAS was the highest level we saw in Pelston. We're seeing, you know, two or three times that in the Grayling area. But I don't have the data in front of me, so I don't know the exact numbers, but, you know, it is, you know, two or three times higher in the, in the Grayling area.
All right. Thanks. A couple more people's questions here that are asked to be called upon. Michael Reeves? Mike?
Thank you. I'm the Emmett County Administrator, and I want to thank Eagle and the Health Department for participating in this event for Emmett County residents and others, so they can learn more about this. First of all, Emmett County would be disappointed if we didn't, you didn't continue your investigative work and make sure of any and all sources of this contaminant are located. Second, you didn't comment on any of the tests that were done at the airport that showed no contaminants. Is that something that you released to the public?
You're talking about the two wells that are used by the air, airport?
Correct.
Yeah, so those are on the east side of the airfield, you know, kind of side gradient to the training areas. And those wells are greater than a hundred feet in depth. They were both non-detect. So it's likely that, you know, those training areas are above those wells. And as that plume moves, you know, down gradient, it can't get down that deep to those wells, so close to the source area.
Thank you. The second question I'd like to ask is, you didn't speak of the requirement for Public Act 139 airports and similar to Grayling and other locations in the state of Michigan were mandated by the FAA to utilize this A triple F phone. Do you speak to anything in regards to the federal government being ultimately responsible for this mandating?
Well, I, I can chime in on that and can't really speak to the ultimate liability. But I, I think the, you're right. Airports across the state and across the country have been mandated to have that military specification A triple F. And, you know, that's one of the reasons, I think, we've got kind of a multi-pronged approach. Number one, collecting it from those that don't need as least as much in their inventory. And then, you know, M. part and our federal partners are working on alternatives to get that out of the stockpile. We can find something that is equally effective. In fact, that's a requirement under the National Defense Authorization Act, but as, as you can imagine, I don't think there's any of the manufacturers out there who have accepted responsibility for, for this across the country. And, you know, I, I think that's something that's yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you again for your assistance in putting this on. I think it's very helpful for the residents.
It's good to know. Glad to do it.
All right, thank you. One, another person with their hand up, Richard Carlson. Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, am I on now?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I am a property owner in Pelston. And, but I'm not there. I leased or rent that property. I did not know about this problem until the PFAS, until I got back a week ago and I see it on the local news. That's why I'm attending this evening. I'm just wondering if the property owners should not have received information regarding this situation? Because I was told in the dark, and I felt the liability to my renters.
Yeah, so usually when we have information that a residence is going to be sampled and that it's a rental property, we try and get the information of the tenant and whoever owns the property. And we send the results letters to, to both of those parties. So if, if you haven't received a letter, feel free to reach out to me and we'll make sure that you get that. If you have any questions, just, just contact me.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Okay, Heather Slocum, got your hand up? Go ahead.
Yes, this is in regards to the village water system that was talked about previously. I understand that it was proposed, I believe, someone said a few years ago, and the residents voted against it and that it would cost, I believe she said approximately four million dollars to have one put in. I also, when we were talking about having a deeper well put in at whose expense, I was told the liable party would be responsible for that. How does the liable party fit in with the village water system and the cost of that? Would it all fall on the village taxpayers? Or would some or all of that fall on the liable?
Well, Christian, do you want to tackle that a little bit from the Part 201 perspective? And you've already given examples of where Department of Defense being responsible in Grayling has extended or paying to extend a, a water system there.
Yeah, so I can, you know, talk about that a little bit. So, you know, it's, it's most likely going to be, you know, a combination of, you know, trying to get money from, you know, every source that we can. I know, you know, Eagle's in the process of, of litigation with, you know, manufacturers and, you know, distributors of, of A triple F and other PFAS. So that's something, you know, a possible future source of, of funds for something like this. You know, there are sometimes federal grants that make it easier for a community to put in a municipal system. Those come and go as, as the economy does well and, and does poorly. So but, you know, for any other 201 site, if a, a party caused contamination, they are responsible for one, looking at, you know, where is it going? Is it affecting anyone? And that's something Eagle is already doing at this point. So that's, you know, something, something we're already doing that we normally wouldn't for, for other contaminants. And, and then the liable party is also responsible for, you know, mitigating any one health, health effects to people. So, you know, making sure it doesn't affect drinking water wells. And they're also responsible for making sure it doesn't affect any bodies of water nearby. So under Part 201, the liable party is responsible for addressing all parts of the contamination that was caused.
Okay, so regarding, I believe someone on your panel previously said, no one has stepped up forward to accept responsibility regarding this. Is that correct? Or are we to figure that the airport doing that? I, I don't check completely since they were just using the product that they were told to use.
I, I think I'll jump in here and then Christian or anyone else. You know, I think right now it's really too soon to say what these source or sources of the contamination are. And that's the, the longer term investigation that, you know, Christian and Scott have talked about. It's going to take some, you know, some time. So I I think it's, it's kind of hard to point fingers at anybody right now or to, you know, come up with, you know, what we think might happen depending on what the data might say. I think there's a danger to that. I think what's right now is really most important is that, you know, we have these public health protective measures, you know, being instituted while we're finding the contamination and then devote resources to trying to figure out where it's coming from and how bad it is so that then we can determine whether or not it's going to be a deeper well for some people or whole house filters or a municipal system.
Thank you.
Okay, and going back to Jim Gillette. Jim, you're unmuted. Mr. Gillette?
There we are. I, I, I forgot to press on my microphone. I can address a part of Ms. Slocum's question with regard to a municipal water system in Pelston. This was not a, a voter-based decision. This was a grant that was given to the Village of Pelston a, a number of years ago, probably 12 or 14 years ago for a feasibility study through the University of Michigan, which distributed questionnaires throughout the village on people's feelings about a municipal water system. And secondly, whether or not, cost-wise, it was feasible. And it was determined through that study that most people in the Village of Pelston did not favor a municipal water system. They liked the water they have. And secondly, the, the, it was not going to be cost-effective because of the low number of residences within the village that would sign up for a municipal water system. So that's what happened there and, and it's just didn't happen.
All right, thank you. I think this is our last question. According to what I see here, why weren't every property owner in Pelston notified? I have a seasonal property in town and wasn't made aware of this issue except from, from a friend. There must have been a better method than going door to door.
Yeah, I'll talk about that a little bit. We didn't go, just go door to door. We also talked to the Village of Pelston, Emmett County. We talked to multiple media sources in the area. So we tried what we could to get the word out. We can only pull so much private information, you know, when we go out to sample. So, you know, we did what we could and, you know, we hope that people talk and that, you know, people get the news and that people get these multiple avenues that, that we're putting this information out on.
Okay, Steve, it looks like I think we got everybody covered here. So, um, yeah, I think you're ready to take us out if you want.
All right. Well, I do, once, once again, want to thank all the panelists here tonight for the presentation, sharing the information and being as transparent as we can throughout this process on, on what we know and don't know as we try to address the contamination and making sure that we're protecting public health along the way. And I really appreciate all of the participants, the attendees, the good questions you had tonight. And, you know, we'll do everything we can to keep everybody informed along the way. And I'm assuming we'll probably be scheduling, you know, another one of these virtual possibly town hall meetings in a couple of months, once we've got some more data and, and have something to share with you. So Jim, thanks a lot for running us tonight. Did a great job. Thanks, everybody, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.